I'd like to call to order the September 22nd, 2025, regular city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Dayton let the roll call show everyone is present this evening, and we will move on to approval of the minutes for September 8th, 2025. Councilmember Bogart.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion regarding the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have no bills for this evening. So move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion regarding tonight's agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this point, we'll open the floor for public comment. Those wishing to address the council have two minutes to do so. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the city clerk, and two-minute time limit, so whoever might be interested.
I'm Denise Simeon. I live at 25142 Jefferson Court. I've been a member of the South Lion Parks and Recreation Commission since about 2014. I'm speaking tonight as a resident and not representing the commission. My remarks are limited to the use of the Huron Valley Trail. I frequently walk or bicycle the trail. Several years ago, I mentioned appall that trail users have changed. It used to be that cyclists practiced safety rules and trail etiquette, including riding at a safe speed, keeping your cycle under control, and giving an audible warning when passing others. That has changed over the years with the popularity of e-bikes, and I'll share a story as an example of the unsafe riders on the trail. Please note, I didn't call them cyclists. I was biking at about eight or 10 miles an hour on the trail, an older man riding an e-bike zipped by me at a very fast pace without any warning. He was pulling a trailer with a large dog in it. I estimate that the man, the e-bike, the trailer, and the dog combined must have weighed at least 300 pounds. His wife passed me a while later at a slower pace, and I mentioned to her that a friendly audible warning is a good way to practice trail etiquette and safety for others, and that he was traveling very fast. She said, "Well, he likes to go fast, and he doesn't believe in warning anyone." If I had been preparing to go around a walker, he could have easily run into me. I hate to think of getting hit by a fast-moving 300-pound vehicle at 15 to 20 miles an hour. This is just one example of the new riders on the trail. I support your efforts and encourage you to adopt a speed limit. The trails at Kensington, Hudson Mills, and Stony Creek Metro Parks all have a 10-mile-an-hour speed limit. As a commissioner for the Parks Commission, I have suggested for the past several years getting signage installed along the trail, posting a speed limit and to give an audible warning when passing. I've also given examples of signs on other trails, too. I know my time's up. I give my strong support for a speed limit on the trail and also throughout town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Dave Richter. I live at 109 Aspen Way, South Lion. I've been a rider of the trail with an e-bike for the last six years. I've logged about 12,000 miles on the trails in the city. I've also ridden my bike in six or seven other states. There are a lot of rules that need to be adhered to. Etiquette is a problem. I've seen an awful lot in those miles. Things that I haven't seen is I haven't seen any law enforcement on the trails. I've never seen a city person with a yellow vest trying to train people. And it's getting worse because people are buying higher-performance bikes and going 28 to 30 miles an hour with no effort. Some of the people I see out trying to ride, I'll see them two, three times, and they disappear. The thing benefits for me is it helped me lose, over that time, 110 pounds. If I wouldn't have gotten on an e-bike, I wouldn't have had the capability to ride a bike. So if you start taking away e-bikes on the trail, things that I see in your proposal of saying, you know, "No bikes on the sidewalks." Have you tried to ride a bike from about in the city limits on the street? The streets I'm speaking of is Pontiac Trail, 10-mile road, 11-mile road, 9-mile road. They're not worthy to ride bikes on. There's no bike lane, and that's a problem. The other big reason why I'm here is in this document, there is nothing about the motorcycles that are being ridden around the town. I go through a couple of things that need to be done. McCaddy Park needs posted signs of a speed limit. My grandkids get out of the car. They want to run. I'm up. I'll come back next month and finish.
Well, we have another public comment at the end of the meeting as well.
I'm short. Hi, my name is Basha Keeler, and I'm a resident of South Lion for the last 18 years. My address is 58226 McCormick Court. I want to begin first by thanking you for all the work that you do to keep South Lion safe. It's a great community to live, and that's probably why it's growing so fast. I know that your intent with this ordinance is to keep our city safe. And so with that said, I do want to share just a couple of concerns about parts of the proposal that do affect some of our kids. First of all, I want to talk about the 10 mile-per-hour limit, and especially on the trails, but also on the sidewalks. It really is unrealistic because most bicyclists without an e-bike can ride faster than that. I do believe that there has to be some rules and some teaching for some of our younger kids, 14-year-olds and up, that are riding these e-bikes, and they do need to learn some etiquette. I, as a parent, teach my kids how to do that, but not everyone does that, so I do believe in doing that. Second, I want to talk about the penalties that are outlined in what the ordinance proposal is. They are way too severe. Labeling violations as misdemeanors with the possibility of jail time, that's criminalizing childhood behavior, so I just want to state that. Third, and maybe most important, is the ordinance was really written without any input from some of our folks that do ride e-bikes, and I think they would be more than happy to keep our streets safe, but if they were asked for some input of what they can and cannot do. So the gentleman talked about 11-mile, 12-mile Pontiac Trail being unsafe to ride on. He's absolutely right, especially with people and their cell phones and texting and driving. I would never want my child to be on those streets as a 14-year-old riding their e-bike. So I urge you to revisit these parts of the ordinance. Keep downtown pedestrian only, yes, but allow for reasonable trail reuse, fair penalties, youth voice, and equitable access. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
My name is Erica Wilde. I am a resident of Lion Township. I live at 26201 Great Plains Drive. I, too, have been a member of this community for 15 and a half years now, and I am writing and here tonight to drastically oppose this proposal. And I sent all of you this email this morning with no response. My 14-year-old son, who is here in the back row, rides his e-bike to my parents' house in the city limits. My dad has one eye and cannot do things that an ordinary 67-year-old man can do. They're putting an addition on their home right now, and they need to move things from their basement into the addition on their first floor so that he can access things easier. My mom's had two knee replacements in the last three and a half years, and they need help. So to go from Lion Township to South Lion on his e-bike is going to be a misdemeanor and put my 14-year-old straight A student in jail. Is that not ridiculous? I, behind the wheel of a vehicle, would have to be driving recklessly or under the influence to receive a misdemeanor. A kid on a bike receives a misdemeanor to ride his bike in the city limits? Where does that even correlate? Where does that correlate? These punishments are way too harsh and need to be... This ordinance needs to be revisited. This day and age, when we're all trying to get our kids off of screens, the South Lion City is telling them to go in the house and sit and play video games, get off their bikes. We fight screen time every day in our house. If Parker is seen riding his bike inappropriately, doing wheelies in the street, disobeying officers, his keys will be taken from us, not from law enforcement. I highly recommend that this be revisited. It's funny that Oakland County sheriffs have no problem with this in Lion Township. Thank you.
Again, for those who didn't quite finish their discussion, there is another public comment at the end of this meeting, if you want to stay for that as well. Any further public comment this evening?
Linda Benson, 438 Washington Manor. I just want to thank the DPDW because when you ask nicely, then they came in, they repaired a gouging in our driveway that semis had made and Home Depot would not fix, but our DPDW, ta-da, came and fixed it and filled the potholes, and I thank them, and I thank everyone here.
Thank you very much.
Kathy Winters, 1062 Chestnut Lane, South Lion. I just want to talk about the e-bike ordinance. I just want to make sure that e-bikes that you pedal, that we use for exercise, that have a limit on them of only going a certain speed, like Class 1 and Class 3 e-bikes, you can't pedal faster than 20 miles an hour, which for me, I barely make 18 miles an hour when I try real hard. So... But there are these little motorcycles out there that they don't pedal, and they're going like 28 miles an hour, which is a hazard on the trail. And I'm an avid bike rider. I've ridden 1,800 miles this year already, and I use... Excuse me. I use the Huron Valley Trail all the time. I use it to get to a lot of other trails, go to Kensington, all sorts of things. So I would really hate to see assisted e-bikes banned from the Huron Valley Trail. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Amy Ponsak. I'm actually a Green Oak Township resident. I just live just outside of the city border. I often ride into the city. I've recently purchased an e-bike, and it's been a game changer for me. I can go much farther, much, much happier person these days with my bike. I love my bike. Having said that, I'm also more of a person who is carbon neutral. I try to be looking into that. I have made short trips into the city of South Lion to do my small errands. I do have a bike to be able to carry home some groceries, run into the hardware store. I've done that several times. So please consider people like me as an adult who would be using these facilities. I'd also like to point out that your sidewalks throughout this area are a bit rough to ride through. Please look into that. Considered a larger shared-use, non-motorized path throughout your town, especially Pontiac Trail. Bicycles are an economic driver within your town, so please consider it, too. Thank you.
At this point, we will close public comment, and move on to tonight's consent agenda. And on tonight's consent agenda, we have an updating to the credit card policy. We have a new candidate for the Cultural Arts Commission, Melissa DeAngelo, and a new candidate for the Downtown Development Authority Board, Ken Fader. We'll be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Kurtswell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the consent agenda as presented by the mayor. All support.
Very good. Do we have any other discussion regarding this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I want to thank Melissa DeAngelo and Ken Fader for volunteering to help both on the Cultural Arts Committee and the DDA. The city does appreciate everybody's volunteer efforts because that's the only way that a lot of these things will actually come to pass, so certainly appreciate them stepping forward. At this point, we'll move on to a discussion of downtown, and our city manager will handle that discussion tonight, I believe.
Actually, tonight, it will be handled by Kim Rivera, our new DDA director.
Hello. I'm Kim Rivera, and I'm so excited to be here. This is a whole new chapter for me, and I'm just really excited to set roots here in South Lion for work and also home. I'll get the keys Wednesday. Anyway, okay. It's an honor to begin work today as the new DDA Economic Development Director in South Lion. I bring with me over 30 years' experience leading community branding and marketing for cities all over Michigan, all the way to California, and I'm excited to bring that here and just devote it to South Lion. I served on the Milford DDA Board from about, I think it was 2003 to 2010, and I also was the president of the Milford Business Association for two years, so I can appreciate the merchant's point of view as well. I'm so excited to help build the future of South Lion. So we're revving up for the Lake Street Cruise Wednesday, September 24th, and Pumpkin Fest celebrates 40 years. They'll be setting up on Friday, with the event on Saturday and Sunday this weekend, as well as it's overlapping with the statewide Downtown Day on the 27th, so people can celebrate downtown in the middle of Pumpkin Fest. The farmer's market will be, let's see, Friday, Saturday... They'll be setting up Friday and Saturday and Sunday. Ladies Night Out, Friday, November 14th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., and we're starting planning on the holiday spectacular, and I'll be meeting with Tanya tomorrow about that, and we're looking forward to Carl and Joanne's Old Fashioned Christmas Saturday, December 6th. So, thank you.
Any questions for our new DDA director? Councilmember Doge.
I just want to say welcome, and I love that we have you stand up in front of council on your first day.
Me, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtswell.
Thank you. Welcome to the city of South Lion. I think there's going to be a lot of great opportunities for you here, a lot going on. I do have a question regarding Milford.
Yes.
Could you please repeat what you did for Milford? I'm just...
Sure. I worked on their brand, the Meet Me in Milford brand, and a lot of the marketing there for just about 30 years, and I also served on their DDA Board as a board member for seven years, and I was the president of the Milford Business Association, which is like the merchant organization.
One thing I want to... And I don't know why, but maybe it's because of your efforts, so I'll put that out front. Milford seems to be quite successful in getting new businesses to come into their town, and I don't know if that is because Milford has a little bit of a different allure than maybe City of South Lion does. Maybe there's a little bit more benefactor kind of interest where you have more industry, where they're willing to kick in a little bit of money to help things out. Maybe the landlords in Milford are a little bit more willing to go out and recruit a tenant to come into their building when it empties. I don't know what that formula is, but I have noticed that Milford has been able to ride that wave and get new businesses. I go to Milford. I go to all the downtowns because I like to compare and see what's going on. So what is that formula, and what do you bring to South Lion to assist us on, you know, repurposing and getting some of our buildings that are empty, getting them filled with some very viable businesses that the community wants?
I'm glad you asked that. So they are not an actual Main Street community, but they actually use the principles and ideals of the Main Street program, so I'm very familiar with that. I've been going to the National Main Street conferences for a while, and I think it's really about place-making, and I look at a town like a home. So, you know, if the center of town is beautiful, when you invite people to come, you want it to be beautiful, so they feel right at home, and then they want to stay longer. So it's all about place-making and throwing events, just like with the Main Street program, and working together, building relationships, and, you know, working with other organizations as partners, you know? Being united is really key, being united, and it just... You can't help but be drawn to a community that's working together to be the best that they can be, so.
Well, in your position, did you go out and work with the landlords and say, "I've done a market study. We don't need any more restaurants in our town. You know, we're kind of at our max. This is the kind of retail that we're missing, that we think would do well." Do you have that kind of input, working with landlords, to assist them and then go out and try to find that location or that business to come into the town? So I'm looking for a little bit...
Like a literal...
You know, I'm not your boss, so, you know, I'm not... I can't tell you what to do. That's only for the city manager. But if you're looking for input, my input would be that I would like to see someone a little bit more on the active side in assisting us with ideas, even if you have to throw a weekend of inviting four or five retailers and say, "Hey, South Lion is having an open house. Here's our properties that are available. The landlords and the owners are going to be here to meet with you. We'd like to just... Just an open house, no pressure. Look at our town." That's the kind of proactive approach that I think I'm sort of looking for, but...
I love that. I love that, that you said that. We did that in Fenton, and we invited, you know, we invited a lot of real estate agents to come and tour the downtown and hold an open house kind of a thing. We did their business recruitment pieces, so we've done that in a lot of communities where we actually create the literature for the director, who it's now me, to be able to use, so I can actually do that on the job. And I, 100%, I'm like a horse at the gate. I can't wait to help and talk and go out and find good matches.
Mr. Mayor, may I have one more question?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The other question that you just mentioned, it was Fenton. What was your role in Fenton?
Well, my company was New Moon Visions. We're a place branding and marketing firm for... That's why I have all the community branding experience all over Michigan. So we were their marketing firm for several years, and we would actually be... My team and I would be the boots on the ground, talking with merchants, getting them... Helping them to prepare, for instance, like the Streetscape project, and you have that road project coming up, so I'm 100% ready to hit the ground running and talk with the merchants one-on-one to see, you know, what issues they're concerned about and how to prepare and be up to date every week of the construction and all those types of things. In Fenton, we created an economic development piece that they could hand out, a really nice printed piece, and, like I say, it was... Our job was the marketing firm. We weren't the DDA director, but we acted kind of like an outside DDA director for them.
And what period was this? Because I know Fenton has gone through a big change with their downtown.
Yes. Let's see. The Streetscape was in, I think it was in 2014, so...
Okay.
We worked for them for about, gosh, it seemed like it was about six or seven years.
So it's in that period where they were experiencing...
The boom.
Yeah. And have you passed the Main Street program? Have you gone through it?
I go to the conferences, but that's one of my exciting things I get to do, is actually get educated with the program.
So you haven't gone through... Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've been very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions for our DDA director this evening? Very good. Welcome aboard, Kim.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll move on to the fire chief's report with Chief Conrad this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. A year-to-date, we're at 1,035 calls, and from Thursday, September 11th to today, we're at 24 EMS calls, six service calls, four hazardous conditions, one good intent, and two false alarm calls. We have a new hire, Brent Cook. He lives South Lion Township area and comes to us with no training, and he'll start academy in October.
Any questions for Chief Conrad this evening? Love the pictures of the training and everything else that you went through there. I appreciate you sharing that with us, too.
Yeah, pretty exciting stuff.
Yep. Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
Move on to the police chief report this evening with Chief Unruh.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilpersons. I'd like to introduce South Lion's three newest police officers. First of all, I'd like to introduce Jacob Huisington. Jake served the United States Marine Corps from 2017 to 2021, where he was highly decorated, and he served overseas. Officer Ryan Booth. Ryan is an Eagle Scout. He has his associate's degree in criminal justice from Washtenaw Community College. Officer Shane Sovick. Shane graduated with a bachelor's degree in general business from Saginaw Valley State University, where he also played football. Shane is a second-generation police officer with South Lion. Shane's father is the former chief, police chief, Chris Sovick. I want to welcome all three to the city.
Welcome, officer. Glad to have you. Welcome, officer. Glad to have you. Welcome, officer. Glad to have you.
Good to have you. Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. Welcome. Welcome. Thank you.
Last week, South Lion Police Officers Officer Rapp and Officer Sovick, who you just met, participated in the annual Law Enforcement Torch Run. This event raises money and awareness for athletes who participate in the Special Olympics in Michigan. The Police Department wants to remind everyone that north- and southbound Pontiac Trail and Lafayette Street will be closed between Millennium Middle School and West McCaddy Street at 9:30 a.m. on Saturday, September 27th for Pumpkin Fest activities to include a 5K run, which starts at 9:50 a.m., and the parade, which starts at 10 a.m. The road will not reopen until the parade is over. So if you've got to be somewhere after 9:30, get out of the area, so.
In addition to that hint, anything else? Any questions for our police chief this evening? Councilmember Bogart.
Have you heard from the Pumpkin Fest committee whether they still have a need for volunteers for the parade route?
So last week, they had zero volunteers. We heard this morning they have two.
Okay.
So to make the event successful, they need volunteers.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for our police chief this evening? Thank you very much, chief. And thanks for that hint for Saturday, because if you're not out of town, you're going to watch the parade. At this point, we're going to have the public hearing for the DDA TIF plan. Did you want to introduce the city manager, Zellnik?
Yes, thanks. The city published a public hearing notice on August 27th and September 11th, which tonight gives the opportunity for hearing public comments relating to the amended development plan and tax-incremended financing. amended development plan and tax incrementing financing plan. We do have attached for you the public hearing notice and the requirements of tonight's meeting is to open the public hearing, hear any public comments, and then close the public hearing. The TIF plan will come back for city council at a few, future meeting for adoption.
Okay. At this point, we will open the public hearing at, uh, 7:00 p.m. on September 22nd. Those wishing to provide public comments regarding the TIF plan, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the city clerk. Seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:01 this evening. We have no unfinished business this evening. So, we move on to new business number one, and new business number one is the e-bike ordinance.
Yes. Tonight's featured agenda item is the city staff and city attorney have been working on the e-bike ordinance to address a large increase in e-bike users in the community and also improve public safety. I've attached a copy of the proposed ordinance for council's review. This is not a first reading of the ordinance. It was placed on the agenda to give feedback and get feedback on the initial ordinance work. I've attached a copy of that for you, too, tonight. And tonight's course of action is provide feedback and give staff direction on the proposed e-bike ordinance. The Police Chief, the city attorney, and I are here to answer any questions or give any, uh, um, any clarification on any items that you see within the ordinance.
So, since we're not going to be approving, uh, any, anything this evening, we'll just open the floor for discussion purposes. Councilmember Duke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I just want to say I really appreciate, um, the work to get this started and the fact that it is not just a reading of the ordinance, because there's clearly a lot of input on this that, um, needs to be listened to. Um, I spoke at length with the city managers today about this, uh, and still have a lot of questions. Um, I would, I would say that I, the one thing that surprised me was the, um, the punishment also. The, uh, I did feel that was too strict. That's something I'd like to look into. Um, but I really liked the idea. And first of all, I just wanted to say, I, at least for me, I do get and read all emails that I get, but I can't always respond to them that second. But I did, I do read them. Um, and I appreciate that very much. And I appreciate everybody who came here. I wish more people did this for more issues. But, um, I get calls about the, you know, the bikes constantly. There's a lot of, uh, people mad about, you know, the way this is going on. But I really love the idea of, of having a kind of citizens committee on this. This is kind of a new thing for us. Um, it is, um, it has gotten big really fast. And I, you know, personally, I'd love to hear, um, from some citizens who would like to, um, maybe be in a committee for that. But, uh, my biggest issue is, um, is the punishments and the, uh, uh, speed limit, I think is the big, the two, um, issues I would have. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Bogart?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a few questions to clarify, um, the ordinance. Um, it's my understanding that this is not a ban on e-bikes or electric skateboards, correct?
Correct.
And the reasoning behind it is that we've had incidences where there's been accidents where, um, persons have run into vehicles, um, have been unsafe, um, on the trails. And it's definitely a concern, especially for me. I am a rider of an electric scooter. I have a thousand-watt scooter that does 25 miles an hour. I like to use it in a respectful fashion. And I think it's great that we have a framework to kind of clarify what the rules are. Um, one point that was kind of confusing was a restriction on the use of e-bikes and electric skateboards in the Central Business District. Can you explain what the Central Business District is, Paul?
Well, it was mostly, you know, explained basically from McCady Street, north to the railroad tracks, kind of going Wells Street to Washington. It's basically a boundaries of the DDA district. But what we wanted to do is, because we had some input from some of the business people, is that they're concerned that the bikes or scooters or skateboards that are riding through on the sidewalks, and our sidewalks are very narrow within, within the downtown area, uh, can influence somebody walking in and walking out, out of, of the businesses. But, you know, the Michigan Vehicle Code already prohibits the use of electric bikes on sidewalks. And we don't want to prohibit the, uh, use of electrical bikes within the, within the community. We just want to try to govern and try to make sure everybody knows what the rules are. So, we included some of those things, which also may be within the Michigan Vehicle Code, like I said, about riding them on sidewalks. And we didn't want to limit, extremely limit their use. We were just concerned about safety. That's why, that's why we tried to limit it to going 10 miles an hour, which is similar in other communities or other trails, Pollyant Trail, Paint Creek Trail, um, here on Clinton Valley Trail. I know Kensington, I'm not sure what theirs is on theirs. But we want to be able to provide signage, make people aware what's going on, but not stop the use of them. We just want to make people aware, make them safe, but still allow people to use them to go from point A to point B, because we do see a definite use and people do want to have them in the community.
So, there's no verbiage in the ordinance that restricts use of e-bikes on sidewalks outside of the Central Business District? Is that correct?
It is. It does say they're not allowed on the sidewalks, but the Michigan Vehicle Code also states that their electric bikes are not allowed on sidewalks.
Okay. So, the state law supersedes-
Yes. But we, we wanted to include it so people are aware. To have these discussions with the public and get feedback, we want people to know by trying to cite the Michigan Vehicle Code and expect a 13-year-old to go on the Michigan Vehicle Code and try to look something like that up. It's not appropriate, even ask the parent to do it. So, that's why we're trying to bring this to council's attention and discuss these with the public.
Okay. Uh, and in the ordinance, there was two different ratings for, um, skateboards and e-bikes. Skateboards were limited to, I think it was 2,500 watts, and bikes were 750 watts?
And I don't know if the Chief wants to comment on that or the city attorney. I know she was briefed by the other attorney who was working that, on that also. I, I'm not familiar with the actual wattage, so I really can't say what the limits are.
I'm, without having it in front of me, I'm going to guess that that's what the Vehicle Code defines an electric skateboard as, but I have a statute, so I can look that up.
Okay. And this ordinance does permit the use of e-bikes and electric skateboards on the rail trail. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, that's it. Thank you.
So, the one thing I, I saw that was not covered in here is the use of electric dirt bikes. Okay. So, I know it's a, kind of a different subject. Uh, these are typically electric vehicles that lack pedals. Uh, they're designed for off-roading. They are not permitted to be on city streets. They are not permitted to be on the trails. That's not covered in here, and I think that needs to be spelled out, because I've seen them going up and down my street. I've seen them going down the trails. I was over at McCady Park as they wanted to go, uh, off-roading up and down the sledding hill. So, there's a lot that goes into this from an educational standpoint, too. The other part is, I mean, you know, I mean, you, you provide this for a kid, it's, it's, it's great. It's a great, great tool. It's a great piece of equipment. But there's an educational responsibility as well. So, when it says in here that they need to adhere to the, uh, the laws as dictated in the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code, that means that when you're approaching an intersection, as I was earlier this week in a subdivision, I'm coming up to a four-way stop, I'm stopping as the electric vehicle goes right on through the intersection against that stop sign. They need to understand that's a violation. They need to be stopping for that. And once stopped, they know that the person on the right has the right of way. Obviously, this, this kid wasn't educated along those routes. So, I mean, this is also one of the things that needs to come with this. Now, I know that our police have stopped folks on these bikes, provided some of that education in the, uh, in the past several weeks, talked to some of their parents. But it's inherent upon the, the parents who provide these things to make sure that their, their kids fully understand the responsibility that comes with this, uh, this piece of equipment that they've given them. Because the last thing we want to see is somebody get hurt or worse. And as I think one of the council members already mentioned, we've had people on electric vehicles run into the side of a car. The car won. He broke his arm. All right? We don't want to see it. Uh, you know, I don't want people getting hurt in here. I want people to be safe and I want people to enjoy the amenities that we, we have in the city, like the trail and so forth. So, it's kind of a, a dual responsibility, not just for the riders, but also for the, uh, the folks, the parents, whoever, that provide the, uh, provide the electric bikes to the, uh, the individuals. They need to know how to properly use them and what laws need to be obeyed. It's the same laws that they're going to be dealing with once they get their driving permit and driver's license as well.
Excuse me, ma'am. I just want to confirm that the definitions are straight from the Michigan Vehicle Code.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. In regards to the misdemeanor penalty, is that typical for an ordinance like this that other municipalities have put out there? Is that pretty standard or instead of just a traffic infraction?
So, I just want to make it clear that the misdemeanor is only for 62-63. It's not for the whole ordinance. It's just for that section, which covers somebody under the age of 14, operating a Class III electric bike, which goes 28 miles an hour. And also for having, um, an electric, um, bike on a non-motorized, um, trail. As for other, uh, cities, uh, this is a hot topic everywhere. I tried to get other people's ordinances and I didn't get anything back. So, I think we are probably one of the, the first cities to really, um, look at this and start an ordinance for it.
So, I guess, um, back to the other stipulations by other communities, that my follow-up question was the 10 mile per hour, um, limit. I wasn't sure if that was typical of communities for these sorts of, um, e-bikes and such. But, I mean, if we're the first, then it's kind of-
Well, for cities, I know the parks have done the 10 miles per hour.
Yeah, because we have a linear trail. So, that's what that was basically addressing. You know, riding on the street, it wasn't a limit to, to 10 miles an hour. One of the first ordinances that was drafted was actually drafted by the City in Arbor, and that's been in effect since, I believe, 2021. So, we are definitely not the first. Uh, but there are others. You know, she made inquiries to some of the other ones that didn't get a response, but other ones are out there.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
Sure.
Councilmember Kurtzwall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also would like to join with, um, my colleague in thanking the individuals that are here this evening, that are providing, um, their input into, uh, some of these changes. I think there's been some misunderstanding of some of the issues, but then I think there's some clarity also. Um, the, what we're doing is, is amending certain sections. So, it's not like there's this blanket, you know, ordinance out there. You have to look and see what is being amended. So, for example, um, amendment to Chapter 58 offenses and miscellaneous provisions. Uh, it looks like what was amended in just that section, um, was adding in, um, was it electric skateboard? I mean, that's what we were adding in, an electric skateboard. And so, we already have an ordinance in place in the city that is already regulating roller skates, roller blades, street skates, and skateboards. All we're doing is adding another term in that section, which now includes, um, electric skateboards. So, I don't see what the problem is. The, the ordinance has already been there. So, you've been living with this ordinance for ever how long you've been in the city. Um, and then, when we go to the next page and look at some of the changes that are being made, it, it's pretty common sense. Um, for example, it looks like riding on certain devices or structures, it shall be unlawful to roller skate or ride on a skateboard or electric skateboard. So, this section is adding in electric skateboards. So, what can't an electric skateboard do? Well, an electric skateboard, like a skateboard, which most of your kids probably have them, um, shall not ride on a bench, a table, a plant, planter wall, a retaining wall, or other device or structure which is not intended for pedestrian or vehicle traffic. What, what's wrong with that? I mean, to me, that's pretty common sense. If, if you are riding something that is mobile, then why are you allowing people to ride on benches and tables and retaining walls? So, I didn't see a problem with that. Next, the same section added. It shall be unlawful for any person to roller skate or ride a skateboard or electric skateboard on any sidewalk or other paved, um, surface intended for pedestrians. But there's a qualifier there. Did anybody read it? The qualifier is, you can't ride if you are riding in a reckless or careless manner, or in a manner which is likely to result in injury or harm to any person or property. What's wrong with that? I, I guess, uh, at least on this part of the amendment to the ordinance, I don't understand the concern. Maybe people didn't read it that way, but that's what it says. So, what we're saying is, we're now adding electric skateboards into the general ordinance that we've had for years. And all we're saying is, if you're going to ride things recklessly, then you're going to have a problem with us. But other than that, have a good time. So, maybe people might want to read this again and take a good look at it, at least on that section. Then we have the amendment to Parks and Recs. Um, and I think this is probably the section that people have the issues with. And that seems to be the area that does deal. Well, we did add an, an additional definition, um, defining, um, in Parks and Recs, an electric, um, bicycle, the Class I, II, and III. Is that correct, city attorney? Yes. So, we-
An electric skateboard.
An electric skateboard. So, that's an added definition, not a problem. So, the problem really seems to be with some of the issues and the language in the amendment regarding 62 and 63. Um, I'm going to provide some additional information. This, this particular, uh, draft says a person under the age of 14 shall not operate a Class III bicycle. Okay, a Class III bicycle can go about 28 miles an hour. So, that's age 14. My personal opinion is, I would like to see it at 18. Um, an individual less than 18 who operates or rides, um, shall wear, to me, this is just common sense. If you're going to be on these motorized vehicles, you shall wear properly fitted and fastened bicycle helmet that meets federal standards. Um, it shall be a misdemeanor for a person to operate an electric bicycle or electric skateboard in violation of this section. Chief, would that include failure to wear properly fitted in a, in a properly fitted bicycle helmet?
Right now, that's under that section.
Well, you know what? This is how I look at it. If you are a young adult and you're not wearing a helmet and you're out in the streets and you get a ticket because it's a misdemeanor under our ordinance, to me, that ticket probably saved your life. It probably saved your life. So, what do you want? Do you want to be able to risk your child's person? Because it's not just the kid that's riding the bike. It's the traffic that the child is experiencing when they are riding the bike. So, it's all the other drivers, all the other whatever, whatever, whatever. So, if the community thinks that they don't want that to be a misdemeanor, then I won't be voting on it. But you know what? I won't have that on my mind if a child gets hit and there's head injury. Because I will be able to say, "I voted that they should be wearing a helmet. That kid should have been ticketed. But hey, I did what I could." So, I can see where, yes, city attorney?
May I, may I comment briefly?
Yes, go ahead.
Just on that point, I'm reading from MCL 257662A. A Class III electric bicycle shall not be operated by an individual less than 14 years of age. An individual less than 14 years of age may ride as a passenger on a Class III electric bicycle that is designed to accommodate passengers.
Right. But it's got to have the passenger capacity. Not all of them do. Right. But it's got to have the passenger capacity. Not all of them do, but anyway. So I think the community, I mean, I understand your concern. You don't want your straight-A kid to get a misdemeanor, but do you want your straight-A kid to have brain injury where they'll never have an opportunity to go to college or have a life? I mean, no, excuse me. So, no, the reason I'm saying that is because the formality here on council, the public speaks at a different section. This is just for City Council to debate. And here, when we debate, we debate civilly, we debate respectfully. I respect every one of my council members' points of view, even though I may disagree with them, but we debate in a civil manner. So I think the decision is, is the community needs to decide where they want that to go. But, you know, I'm just letting you know, I'm a very honest, I tell you right up from, Council will tell you, we pretty much know how she's going to vote on stuff. Because I lay my cards out on the table, I'm pretty transparent about it. And that's my concern on that. And then, I wanted to ask on Part III, Amendment to Chapter 90, Traffic and Vehicles, on E. Was that added, or was that always in the general traffic law? No, because you changed it, "Every or electrical bicycle." Okay. Here is something I think is very, very important, and this is where the complaints have come that I have received. The complaints have come from young individuals riding these bikes at night, not having any lights on, not wearing any reflective gear. Many of them dress, you know, they're dressing, you know, maybe with a winter jacket on sometimes in the fall when it gets cold. So here, it says, "Every bicycle or electric bicycle when in use at nighttime shall be equipped with a lamp on the front..." What's wrong with that? But I get it, "...which shall emit a white light visible from a distance of at least 500 feet to the front, and with a red reflector on the rear, of a type which shall be visible from all distances from 50 feet to 300 feet to the rear when directly in front of lawful upper beams..." There you go, the upper beams, "...of headlamps on a motor vehicle." So I read that and said, I can see why you had to add in, on the general traffic law, the addition to include electrical bikes, because many of the complaints that came this spring, in March and April, did not have any reflective gear on them at all. And, Mr. Mayor, I also had an opportunity to do a little bit of research on this generally. Electric bikes, this is from, if anybody wants to, I'll keep it up here. Council, you can look at it, maybe a city clerk can copy it. The American College of Surgeons, and I think it's important whenever we're dealing with technology to take a look at the pros and the cons of what we're using. And this was a bulletin that came out fairly recent, July 17, 2024, and it was about electric bikes are merging as a public hazard. I'm just going to read a couple of points from it. Some more powerful e-bikes, particularly the Class II, which we do have now in our ordinance, provide assistance regardless of whether the rider is pedaling and can be accelerated by a throttle alone, plus more closely resembling mopeds. Another concern is that some controllers can be deactivated by a magnet or a series of keystrokes, allowing speeds greater than 37, which I did confirm was capable of being doing on a Class II. So there's that. This, I think, is kind of important when you're dealing with kids that are 14 years of age. The higher e-bike speeds reduce the reaction time for riders to avoid potential collision. So special caution should be exercised in traffic, as the heavier battery can lead to a faster acceleration and loss of control. So that's pretty important to do it. California, they also are out trying to deal with this. So I wanted to let you know about California. There's worldwide experiences. The risk to children operating faster devices is acknowledged by many states that prohibit Class E, Class III e-bike operation by anyone younger than 16. There are worldwide experiences in here. In 2017, a study of 549 Israeli patients after e-bike crashes noted 65% suffered orthopedic injuries. Pediatric populations appear to be particularly susceptible to serious injury, with a recent review noting 35% of all e-bike-related trauma occurs in patients under 18. There's that. Dutch, in 2018, the Dutch did a trauma level, 10 years, and noted that e-bikes accounted for 2.9% of their accidents, but represented 27.6% of the fatal bicycle accidents nationwide. The Netherlands set a limit for e-bikes to 15 miles per hour and set the minimum age ownership to 16. U.S. experience, San Diego does the most talk. So they've added some rules. New York City has found out that bicycle deaths reached a 24 high in New York City in 2023, as 30 people were killed on a bicycle, 23 of which were riding e-bikes. Three pedestrians were also killed by e-bikes. Across the U.S., lithium-ion battery explosions in e-bikes leading to fires have been reported. Bonos in Nevada. So I think that when you look at what some licensing and registration requirements for e-bike users under the age of 18 are being considered by many states, they're now saying, maybe we ought to make these kids come in and register their bike. Infrastructure and road safety are central, so maybe if we are going to be repairing our roads on Pontiac Trail 9 Mile, we should look at improving it so that we have better opportunities for these kinds of vehicles. There's another state that's going to require e-bike users to carry insurance. So I think we are looking at a topic that others have looked at prior to us, but they've looked at it from a different angle. They've looked at it from the angle of injuries. And I think we have to take all of that in consideration, that maybe whatever format this is, you know, I don't have that big of an opinion on anything except for maybe the age. I think we need, and I think keeping the misdemeanor, but that's just me. If Council votes another way, I'm only one vote. I think there's more to it than just a recreational ride. I think we, as council members, have a duty and responsibility to ensure that every person's child that rides this bike comes home safely every night. But that's just me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the extra time.
You bet. We don't, we don't, no, I'm sorry, yeah.
Just to answer, just some of the concerns articulated by Councilwoman Kurtzwell. She read through the provisions that are causing the most concern, and that's in Section 62-63, all those regulations, that big paragraph. I can tell you, if you pull out the state law, that section I referenced earlier, it's almost verbatim.
It's verbatim.
So we can't do something that state law prohibits, we mean the city. It's already prohibited under state law, and these regulations could be enforced under state law as is. As the city manager pointed out at the beginning of this discussion, a lot of the reason to put it in here is to have it all in one place, to educate, to make sure that the residents are aware of these regulations. That's all.
Thank you, City Attorney Hamamay. Counselmember Dilk.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. So if, I guess it's the same for bikes, too. If you can't ride on the sidewalks downtown, and we don't have bike lanes, are we saying that you have to, if you're going to ride downtown and go to the farmer's market or something like that, you need to ride in the street? You need to be in the street on Pontiac Trail? Need to be in the street on Lake Street? That's where the...
Or you need to walk the bikes on the sidewalk within the business district until you leave the business district and then you can get back on them.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments for discussion? Counselmember Bogart?
You may not be able to answer this, but do you know if in the past there's been any citations of anyone operating e-bikes on city sidewalks?
In South Lyon?
Yes.
So so far, since I've been here a little bit over a month, we've just been doing education.
Okay. And just to clarify, the use of e-bikes and electric skateboards on streets and roads, what are the laws that pertain to operating an unregistered vehicle on city streets and roads? Do they need to be on the side of the road?
Are you talking about the bicycles?
Yeah.
So currently, we do not register the e-bikes.
Correct. My question is, is in terms of e-bikes and electric scooters, are there laws that pertain to how they're operated on roads or city streets? Whether they can occupy the center of the lane, or whether they can be on the side of the road?
They have to be on the side like a bicycle. They can't ride through the middle of the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so we still have, we have a fair amount of input, some areas that still might need to be incorporated in the ordinance and types of vehicles to be addressed, and it's still a work in progress. So I look forward to seeing it come back in the near future. We'll take a look at it. Certainly appreciate everybody's help in putting together the revision right now. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business number two, award of the bid for water service line material verification.
The city now forbid for use of water service line material verification. We received a total of six bids. A little bit was submitted by Duke's Route Canal of Elgin, Illinois. We are recommending that the city award the contract for the water service line material verification project to Duke's Route Canal in the amount of $108,532 from account number 592-540-801. The funding for this project will come out of a grant we received for $384,530 from Eagle. We've attached a bid tab and letter of reward from HRC, and the possible course of action tonight is approve or not approve the award of the bid for the water service line material verification project to Duke's Route Canal in the amount of $108,532 from account number 592-540-801. The city manager, our engineer, as well as Ron Beeson, is also here to answer questions you have tonight regarding this subject.
Counselmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of the bid for water service line material verification project to Duke's Route Control in the amount of $108,532 from account number 592-540-801.
I have a motion from Counselmember Hanson. Was that Counselmember Kivell down there?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a second from Counselmember Kivell. We have some discussion regarding this? Counselmember Hanson.
The only comment that I would make is, when I see bids that are so far apart, it's always good to have clarification. I was appreciative of HRC writing up the letter, you know, that they had done their due diligence, reviewed some of the feedback that this company's already received. So that kind of swayed my uneasiness. Is there anything else maybe you want to add?
Their headquarters is in Illinois, but they are performing the work out of their field office in Plymouth. And this is a company that the city's worked with in the past. They did the sewer videoing and cleaning for like two years, probably about four years ago. So this is a company that the guys that we'll be working with are the ones the city has worked with before.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? So there definitely a known quantity, then, Mike, is what you're getting at. Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this, please.
Kivell?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gil?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much for coming. Moving on to new business number three, and before we get into this discussion, I believe our City Attorney Hamamay has some additional information she wants to discuss.
Mayor, would you like me to introduce Adam first, then you can...
Sure, go ahead.
Go on, do that. The city has made a request to Adams Outdoor to remove the billboard from McCady Park. Based upon that request, we've included a consent judgment that outlines the removal process. We've attached a copy of the consent judgment for review. In the possible course of action tonight, we approve or not approve the consent judgment with Adams Outdoor advertising regarding the removal of the billboard at McCady Park. And the City Attorney has a couple corrections that she'd like to make within the document and discuss with you this evening.
Just very quickly, the attorney for Adams Outdoor has signed off on the substance of this consent judgment. So if you're good with it, then we can get this entered before Thursday, which is the date of a motion hearing that's currently scheduled to remove it from District Court to Circuit. So I just wanted to make sure you were clear on that, and that was why it's a rush, because if we can get this entered, there's no responding to motions and appearing in court and dealing with it. But the only change I would ask you to consider is, on Page 2, Paragraph A, where it says, "Adams lease on the property is extended for five years," I'd like to add a clarification from the expiration of the last renewal term, which expired 3/31/25, and then define that as the quote-unquote "extended lease term" at the end of Paragraph A. And then later on in Paragraph D, when we refer to the five-year term in Line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, Line 6, we would then change it to the newly defined quote-unquote "extended lease term." These are really just making it crystal clear the dates we're talking about, so there's no room for debate. So if you were inclined to approve it, it would be a motion to approve the consent judgment as amended.
Okay. The only other question I had regarding the document itself is on the cover page, where it says, "At a session approved on September underscore 2024." Is that the correct date?
No, we can make that correction.
Okay, we don't have to have that done ahead of time. Okay. Okay. Anything else, City Attorney Hamamay?
Not unless you have any questions for me.
Okay. Let's bring it to the floor for discussion if we have any more questions.
I was just going to make a motion to approve it. That's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent adjustment on the removal of the billboard at McCady Park as amended.
Second.
So I have a motion from Counselmember Hanson, a second from Counselmember Kurtzwell. Now, do we have any further discussion regarding the subject? Counselmember Dilk.
Thank you. I didn't remember us talking about the amount. Did we discuss that the, that it would be 650 a year? I don't remember that.
So this was new information, that back many years ago, there was some discussion about the usability of the south side of the sign.
Oh, right. I remember.
And Adams then notified the city by correspondence that they've unilaterally decided that the appropriate value is 650. And so they wanted the language in here, since we've been accepting that since they did that.
Okay. And I see that we've since agreed that they would put something on there instead of making it just white it out, which I don't think is horrible. I just, that was something that was discussed later, I assume?
Yes. And I could tell you the discussion involved, they were interested in using that for ads for Adams Outdoor. And I explained that I did not think that the city would be comfortable with that. Then he talked about the Ad Council being more public service announcements, and I told him that we would need some sort of ability to say no to certain ads. So they gave us some to put as examples, but we added the language that the particular ad they use now, or replacement ads when it needs to be replaced, would have to be approved by the city manager. So at least there's some control over that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselmember Kurtzwell.
Does the opposing counsel know about these changes? Well, since he already signed off, will he be okay?
I'm sure he'll be fine with it. It's really just clarification of the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselmember Hanson.
I do want to thank you for your work that you put into this. I know it's been several meetings coming and a lot of work in the back, you know, in your office and whatnot. I definitely appreciate you putting in those clarifications for Paragraphe A and D. I mean, with... I mean, with how this can keep, you know, kept getting kicked down the road, I'm confident that your due diligence is at least going to put this to rest in now five years from now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Kurtzwell. City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this one, please.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Kivell?
Yes.
Dilk?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Motion passes. Move on to discussion of the budget this evening. Do we have any questions regarding the budget this evening? Okay, at this point, we will open the floor for public comment. Again, you have a two-minute time limit. Approach the podium, state your name and address for the city clerk.
Fred Winters, 1062 Chestnut Lane. So on the speed limit, consider the 10 mile an hour speed limit just from McCady Park. It's unrealistic to go beyond that, and it's practically unenforceable, so it wouldn't have any weight. The other thing, the way I read the rules there was it would be illegal for me to ride my e-bike from Trotters Point to the corner of Social to get ice cream, but it would be okay for me to ride my regular bike. So a little problem. And the other thing I want you to consider is a problem statement that I think is the biggest issue, is it's reckless riding by juveniles on electric vehicles that are either essentially motorcycles, they're not pedaling, or on the electric scooters, which, where there's no physical use at all as compared to any kind of bicycle.
Thank you very much.
Back again. I heard a lot of information that kind of has been confusing. Class one, two, or three e-bike, you can't tell the difference. It's all in the software that's running it. A bike, an e-bike, class one, has no throttle. But you can disable the throttle in order to meet different areas. If you go to Mackinac, you can disable that throttle. A class two has a throttle, which would help you. Only time I use that is when I want to go across a 11-mile road and you want to get going faster because I didn't have the ability to. That helped you get out of the, out of the hole. So some of the thing is education, and I would like to propose that there's a working group of residents. Parker, oh, Parker left. I think you should have a 14-year-old in a working group to talk about some of the problems that exist. And it's really education. When my kids grew up in Livonia, and my son wanted to play golf, he had to go get an etiquette class from the city in order for him to go on a public golf courses. You know, there's a lot of just flat-out education that you got to do and educate. Go to the, I see more elderly people my age crashing e-bikes because they don't know, they haven't ridden a bike in 20 years, and they think they can hop on and just go. So I would like to see a working group. I'd like to see education done. And McCady Park is close to my heart, is. It is illegal in the state of Michigan to ride a motor vehicle on the lawn in a park, on a pathway in a park. It is illegal in the state of Michigan, and we're conflating the two together. There's motor vehicles, which are these mini bikes. I could tell you, I was brought home in a police car when I was 12, 55 years ago. At that time, my parents were, were told misdemeanor, $500, up to $500. Jail or impound my, my mini bike. I wanted to go to jail rather than go home. So. See you next month. But a working group, I'd be happy to work with it. And I think it's something in education because you're conflating these.
Thank you very much.
I'm Philip Krupp, 718 Hidden Creek Drive. I would like to reinforce some earlier comments about the 10 mile an hour speed limit. I ride just a regular bike. I'm slow, and 10 miles an hour is too low for me. The other thought I had was about the helmets enforcement. Considering that the state of Michigan does not require motorcyclists to wear helmets, I would question whether that would be enforceable or whether someone would wind up challenging it in court. Because I mean, there are a lot of people who consider it their God-given right to be stupid. So, and the state of Michigan is allowing that. And I would also agree that the penalty of a misdemeanor seems a bit harsh for just going a little bit too fast. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kathy Winters, 1062 Chestnut Lane. I just want, I commented earlier, but I just want to comment that I think at the beginning of our trails, if we put up signs that, about etiquette and speed limit, that would help in terms of educating people and getting people to comply. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we will close public comment and move on to the managers' report tonight with city manager Zolnick.
If you'd like, I want to bring up Lafayette Park project right now. We're just waiting for the installation of the light poles and the fountain at that park in order for the first phase to be completed. Next year's phase will complete the other items within the park. The nine-line project, I'm going to be planning on bringing to the next city council meeting. We'll have members of Oakland County here also, Parks and Rec, to understand and get approval of this non-binding memo of understanding between us and all the other groups in the organization, municipalities along nine mile to get from the east end of Oakland County to the west end of Oakland County. The GTE chargers have been all prepped and energized. We weighed all of them to their connection to the Wi-Fi for them to become operational. Pumpkin Fest, which was mentioned several times, are still looking for volunteers, and it's going to be held this, this coming weekend. The auditors will be in attendance at our October 13 city council meeting, discuss and present this year's audit. And the last item has to do with 138 South Lafayette, which is the northern farmer's market parking lot. As you know, the city owns a property there, which is currently used as a city parking lot, as well as a farmer's market parking lot. The property that was formerly a gas station, and the former property owner has been working with Eagle on remediation. Recently, we received communication from a representative of the former property owner requesting the city agree to restrict, restrict use of the property by execution and recording of a restrictive covenant, which would, in summary, prohibit use of property as a residence, restrict groundwater use, and require compliance with Eagle regulations for the construction of buildings on that property. However, after discussions with the city attorney and I with Eagle, we learned that there are alternatives to remediation, including excavation of the southern portion of that property, or collection of more soil gas samples to see if we can get better results, or waiting for the concentrations to continue to decline naturally. Since there are alternatives that will, will not encumber the city's property, we declined to consider the restrictive covenant option. And if council would like to discuss this item of issue further, we'd be happy to put this on a future agenda. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, any comments or questions for the city manager this evening? Very well. Thanks a lot. At this point, we'll go to council comments, and we'll begin this evening with Councilmember Dilk.
Did you say Dilk?
Dilk.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to reiterate again how much I appreciate the participation that we had today with public comment, the emails that we've gotten, and the, the thoughtfulness put into comments. I really, I think it's critical for us to have citizen participation and awareness. I really wish we would get this more often and people paying more attention to what goes on in the city. And it really helps us to make decisions based on what the, the residents are thinking. We can't know if you don't tell us. And what I tell people on social media all the time is just yelling on Facebook does not help us. So I appreciate people being here. I would also like to say, I would have loved to heard from some of the, the teens who ride these bikes. Maybe next time, we can hear from some of them to come up and, and hear what they have to say as well. I also, changing the subject, I'd like to thank Melissa D'Angelo and Ken Fader for stepping up to be on our commissions and boards. We always have a need for this, and it's really appreciated when we get residents to help us on these boards. And lastly, I know that a lot of people will say this, but we really do need volunteers for Pumpkin Fest. Everybody wants to go. Everybody wants to participate. Everybody wants to see a parade. But then when we ask for volunteers, then, you know, zero for the parade right now is, is pretty frightening. So if anybody can, can spare some time, it would be very much appreciated if people would volunteer for Pumpkin Fest. Well, we're not going to be able to put something on at that level again. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Moser.
Just to go off what Councilmember Dilk said, we do need volunteers. And it's, it's pretty sad when we get to like four days before the parade that we only have two volunteers. It's not hard work. It's only a couple hours, so if anybody wants to step up, there's still a sign-up genie on, online, and the same goes for South Lyon Live. They, they, they're still desperate for volunteers, and I just wish we could see a little bit more participation from some of our residents regarding this. It's like she said, everybody loves going to the party, but they just don't like to do the party planning. So if, if you can find some time Saturday morning, we need your help. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment about civil debate. I've been very fortunate to sit on this council with some really great individuals. We have very different opinions. We come from different sides of the aisle. But one thing that we do do is we do our research. We come with, with arguments. We don't come with attacks necessarily on people's personalities and calling them, you know, names because they took a position that we didn't like. Civil debate is very important. It's important to listen to both sides of the argument and to not engage in behavior that snuffs out one side or the other. And I think that's why tonight was very informative for me, just coming off of Charlie Kirk's funeral or Ceremony of Life yesterday. I worked with him early in his career. So it was very personal to me about his life and what he stood for. And I plan to say a lot about Charlie tonight, but I'm not going to. But the one thing I am going to say is that what he stood for was for respectful debate. If you watch his videos, the people he encouraged to come to that microphone were people that either hated him or didn't like what he had to say, and he treated them with respect. And that's the way we run it here in city council, is that there's rules up there. When you walk in, you can read the rules, and when you come up to the microphone and talk, that's your opportunity. We don't engage with you because that's your opportunity to tell us how you think. A lot of us took extensive notes tonight because that's our opportunity to listen to you. But when we're speaking, hopefully you take what you saw tonight is people from very different political backgrounds getting along very well, respecting the debate, and respecting the opinions of our fellow council people. So if you take anything out of here tonight, it's taking that more than this E thing. This will work its way out. It will. But civil debate is something we need to get back to. We need to get off of social media. We need to start looking people in the eyes, and we need to start having conversations. That's what we need to start doing. Also, I want to add in for this weekend, I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be a great weekend. The weather's going to be absolutely incredible. I've got people coming into town that are looking forward to this, so please, if you know somebody, you know, I mean, can't you just sit at a parade and help just a little bit? You know, come early, come over to the Millennium where everyone's going to be lining up. It's going to be a fun time. It, it's just going to be a fun time. So if you can help, please help everybody. Other than that, have a great week, and we'll see everybody at Pumpkin Fest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to be a broken record, but Pumpkin Fest does need volunteers. And I'd like to offer a perspective. I've volunteered either at Pumpkin Fest and/or South Lyon Live for over 15 years, and it's fun to be on the other side. It really is. It's great people watching, and it's great to, to serve our community. And it's great to support our community. For example, South Lyon Live, it's a concert fundraiser for Blessings in a Backpack, which does great work in our community, so they could really use your help. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Kivell.
Well, pretty much the same thing. My wife and I will certainly be out there doing what we can, and it's really very, it, it's, you feel good when you're walking home after the whole night is over. So I, I just think that anybody that likes this community and likes, likes music, likes the, the energy that's going on downtown when we have these events and that. Just if you're, if you're kind of a, somebody that's nervous about, you know, walking in on something that you're not aware of, throw it, throw down. I mean, just go in there, talk to people that need somebody to go get a garbage can moved, you know, because it's, that one's all filled up, and, you know, we need to end up keeping the place clean up. I, I just hope like crazy that people take a moment and just say, let me take a shot at this, because it, it really is fun, and, and it's certainly going to end up being a better event if people are, are out there and everything is running the way it's supposed to. So that's all I got.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. I wanted to thank everyone that came tonight, echo my colleagues' statements that, you know, public input is always great, especially not just to hear your thoughts, but also to educate us as well. Since we're residents as well, it's always good to hear other, other folks' feedback. Additionally, echoing, you know, the need for volunteers, by all means, check out the various websites for Pumpkin Fest. South Lyon Live, I know, has a Facebook event that has a direct link as far as signing up, even if it's for one shift. I mean, at least that, that definitely helps out, for sure. Wanted to make a quick comment as far as the upcoming election coming up in November. I've been bouncing around the city, having some great conversations with some of the residents, and it's been really great to, to, you know, hear from folks as far as a lot of the feedback that the city has done as far as road improvement projects and that sort of thing. And I, I am pleased to hear the, the great overwhelming positivity about the improvements that folks are seeing and how folks are appreciating that. So wanted to make that quick comment and remind everyone to certainly read up on the school bond proposal that's going up. That's also on the election ballot coming up in November to be informed and educated so that you can make that good vote. Again, thank you to all the residents that are putting up those great Halloween decorations. They're already up. I know it's not, it's not, maybe a little early, but I don't, I don't mind at all. So great, great folks out there, some great neighborhoods that are really putting some, some great decorations up. So it's always good to see. So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Thank you, councilmember. As has already been mentioned, this weekend is Pumpkin Fest and South Lyon Live. I'm sure you've heard that by now. I hope everyone makes plans to come downtown and to enjoy these great events. At the same time, as you've heard over and over, it takes volunteers, a lot of volunteers, to make these events possible. Please consider signing up for a couple of hours with your friends and offer to help. It could be something as simple as helping with the Pumpkin Fest parade, watching the kids on the inflatables. Every bit helps. And if you're going to help with the parade, you end up with a prime spot to watch the parade. That's the bonus. Please go to the two websites. Real easy. SouthLionPumpkinFest.com or SouthLionLive.com to sign up because it'll be greatly appreciated. I, I hope to see all of you there for the, the events this weekend, and it's always, always a great time. That's all I have for this evening. Normally at this time, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn, but I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session this evening. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to go into a closed session pursuant to Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268, at the request of the city manager to conduct performance evaluation. I'll support.
We have a motion from Councilmember Kurtzwell, a second from Councilmember Dilk. We have any discussion? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this, please.
Kivell?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Dilk?
Yes.
Dilk?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. At this point, I'll ask everybody to leave who was not involved in that discussion, and we'll see in two weeks. Or maybe three weeks, I think, this year.